All right, well, welcome to the special meeting of the St. Peter School Board. We are virtually attending this evening. It is Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, 6:31 PM. I would make a motion to call the meeting to order. If anyone wants to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Dixon, so moved.
Second, Carlson.
Excellent, we have a motion in a second. Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Dr. Soderland?
Aye.
Vicki?
Hager, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
John?
Carlson, aye.
Leonard, aye, motion to adopt the agenda passes unanimously. If anyone does want to speak to any agenda item this evening, we do have an email. We realize that lots of people are joining us via live stream. We appreciate everyone's involvement and watching on live stream. Again, it's easier to do meetings these days like this over virtual video link. We apologize for not being able to see you in person, but we can't probably accommodate everyone that needs to be in the same room. This puts us all on an equal level playing field. It's a lot easier to hear us, I think. It's a lot easier to see us. So if you are watching via live stream, welcome. And you can email your questions to covid-19information@stpeterschools.org. And we will do our best to get back to you as quickly as possible. And that email will get to multiple administration members who can best answer your questions. I would like to prioritize questions. If you have questions, we want to hear through that email. And we have had a lot of feedback for folks who are encouraging us to go to distance and folks who are encouraging us not to go to distance. And we appreciate that feedback. And I'm not trying to dissuade you from emailing us. But I do want to make sure that we have time for people's questions about specific educational items as well. I just wanted to, before we get into our one action item tonight, give a little bit of a preamble. Like I said, we've received a ton of feedback, more feedback than I have received on anything in 13 years on the board, which makes sense because this is the biggest issue that, and the biggest crisis that St. Peter has had to deal with in the past 13 years and the 90 years before that, too, I think. We appreciate your kind words, your passion. That is clear, that so many of you care deeply about the community. It's also clear that we are very divided. Lots of people think that we should go to distance, lots of people think that we absolutely should not. And I just want to say that, you know, we've got to make a decision tonight, in my opinion. We're going to talk about it, it's an action item, but we're going to have to make a decision either way, and the other side won't be happy about it. And, you know, voters elected us to use our judgment, and that includes listening to our constituents, but it also includes analyzing data, listening to experts, trusting our highly qualified superintendent and staff. And we need to make a decision that best suits the entire district in our estimation. That includes all families, that includes all students, that includes all staff. If, as parents, you need to focus on your child and your children, and if you have needs or ideas or questions about your child's specific needs within anything that the district decides, I really encourage you to talk to your teacher, I really encourage you to talk to your building principal, because I have seen firsthand that St. Peter is very dedicated and creative when it comes to making decisions to help individual kids. So I just wanted to say that. And in the end, you know, we're all people, we're all trying to do the best we can. That includes everyone who's emailed us, every person that lives in this district, every board member, every administrator. If there was an easy solution to that, to this, I'd like to think that we would have pulled it out of our hat before month nine, and we wouldn't be seeing increasing numbers. So this is, this is a really complex problem, and we're all just trying to do our best. So with that, the action item before us is consider approval of recommendations to transition to distance learning. And I will turn it over to Superintendent Gronzeth.
Thank you Chair Leonard, and I'm working on two computers here, so I'm going to share on one of the computers. And? Is it going?
It is.
There we go. Took a minute, got nervous there. Thank you again. I know that last week we got together and we looked at a lot of information. Whoops, sorry. Now I'm going to mess myself up working on two computers here. There we go. And we had a recommendation, it started off with the recommendation by the Regional Center and MDH in Niklet County, and then we really dug in and we looked at our data and we had lots of conversations with the county and others and presented that information. And then the very next day, the data that came out was higher than we expected. Last week when we met, it was supposed to, the county number was supposed to be 27 was the predicted, and it came out to be 38. We had talked about the backlog of some of the testing data, and that showed itself the very next day. And so we've dug in again, looked at the data, had more conversations with more people, and we've met with the St. Peter Education Association and the paraprofessionals leadership team and have come up with another recommendation that's very similar. Is that, hmm? Did I bounce out? What happened there? Can you still see it?
We cannot. We saw something else that was not the presentation for a second.
By Sarah there for a moment. Probably to reshare. Okay. Are we back?
We are.
Good. So we've dug into the data again, starting with the county data, that's where the state tells us to start before we dig into other areas. And you can see that the latest official number was 3522 for Niklet County, for La Sura it was 3323. The projected numbers for this week that would be published on Thursday of this week would be 4825 and 41.5. The county let me know, I think it was, I can't remember if it was last night or yesterday, they gave me the current number, if it was published right now, it would be 65.12. So we can see that it's continuing to climb and shows a rapid increase. But again, that is, that is one point in this. Looking at St. Peter and Niklet County, there's been 220 cases in Niklet County in the past 14 days, approximately 46% of those are within the ZIP codes that are served by St. Peter Schools. We looked at four ZIP codes, there are five, but one of those is just a small portion of that ZIP code. That's, it shows a 305% increase of positive cases from the beginning of October till now. It tells us what we already know, that that number is increasing quickly. The cases are not concentrated in a certain age group, the majority are from community spread, meaning the people who are getting it either know the person that they got it from, or they were out in the community and have no idea where they contacted it. And we'll look into that data a little bit more in some of my favorite graphs and charts. Who doesn't love a great spreadsheet or a graph? And we are starting to see more close contacts at school, both for staff and students. And I can tell you that this week feels significantly different than the prior seven weeks. I'm spending a lot of time on the phone talking to Rachel, because it seems like we are having multiple cases appear on a daily basis, many close contacts, people that need to quarantine, and it's happening a lot faster than it was before. So this is Niklet County cases over time. This is the whole county, and it's just updated to show that from November 1st to November 7th, there was 146 cases. Typically, we're seeing, you know, 5, 10, 15, even 20, but now we're up to the 146, and it's not slowing down. If we narrow that, if we scalpel that down to just the ZIP codes that we serve, this is what that same graph looks like. So there's been 82 new cases in that same time period in just the ZIP codes that we serve. This is going back to the county level data. This is how it's being spread. So you can see 37% are unknown, they don't know where they've, where they had a close contact or where they got it. And then the next one would be a community with a known contact. And what we know is that it's coming from some, from social events, it's coming from family members, and so those are our two biggest areas. And again, scalping that down to just look at the ZIP codes that we serve, we see a very similar bar graph, except for it's in a different order. This time, unknown is on the bottom, but it's still the largest, the largest one, that people don't know where they're getting it. And then 29% where they have unknown contact with a confirmed case. This is against just St. Peter data, the ZIP codes that we serve, and this is the age distribution for those ZIP codes. And you can see that the largest group is 11 to 20, and the next largest is 21 to 30. And so it is the younger population that is getting it at a faster rate. So digging into just our schools data, I put the information that we presented last week on the left, and you can see that there were two elementary students, two middle and high school students, and then in quarantine, 11 and 24. And this week we have four positive cases at the elementary, four positive cases at the middle and high school. And the quarantine numbers have come up quite a bit. We have 41 early childhood and elementary students who are needing to quarantine, and 37 middle and high school students. And then the staff numbers of quarantine have increased as well. We did add community education in the district office this week, and we added maintenance. We didn't have that information last week. So we have four in quarantine through childcare and the district office and two of our maintenance staff. One of the questions that I heard, and I apologize that this is really small, but was, what conversations are we having with other superintendents? What do we know about other districts? And I've met with all of the superintendents in Region 2, in the Big South Conference, the Greater Manicato Area Superintendents, stay in pretty close contact. Today we were talking because of the weather and also chatted about COVID as well. And then the South Service, Co-op Services and the districts that are involved there have met and talked with the county as well. And embed districts, there is a conference call with the governor for MASA, which is Minnesota Association of School Administrators, and MSBA, and then the MSU Governance Council, and so, and I don't know. And so it's something that I've been talking with a lot of people about. I did start a spreadsheet for all the area superintendents where we are entering our own information on what we are considering and what we are doing. I added the column of the COVID rate numbers, the second column there. And if this is small, you can hit the pinpoint to pin my presentation to the screen, and then it will be a bit larger for you to be able to see it. Sorry, I didn't mention that earlier. What it really comes down to is exactly what the state said. We can start at that county data number, and that's, that's a guideline, it's a guidepost, a parameter for us to consider. Beyond that, we have to look at our district-specific data, our own community. And so that is the information that I was sharing. And you can see here that there are districts who have higher numbers who aren't considering a change. And most of those schools, it's because of their community-specific data or their school community-specific data that they don't, they don't have a lot of people in quarantine, they don't have a lot of staff who are needing to quarantine. And so they're able to continue. Wyndham, because they built new spaces this year, they have more space, they can really spread out into some big spaces. And so while other people are changing or not changing, it has to do with the data that's specific to their community. Another question we had was about Gustavus and long-term care facilities. And my thanks goes out to Brad Chambers, who was watching the board meeting last week and shares a love of spreadsheets and graphs, I think. And he did some research for us and looked at Gustavus and the long-term care facilities. So on this graph that he's created, the green bars are what those MDE official numbers are. The blue line is the school district. There's an app that comes from a professor from University of Minnesota, and that is where that's coming from. The school district would be the, from the ZIP codes that we serve. The red line is if you take Gustavus out, and then the yellow line is if you take both Gustavus and long-term care facilities out of it. So while I appreciate that and I can see it, I also want to say that students in Gustavus don't just stay at Gustavus, they live in our community, they work in our community. You know, just about anywhere you're going for coffee, you're going to eat, or going to the gas station, you're likely to have Gustavus students working there. And they also eat in our restaurants and go to our coffee shops and live in our community. So I don't know that it would be fair to totally take Gustavus out of, out of the equation. But that is good information. Also, I wanted to note that some of those sites only had information up to the end of October, and that's why that last line is the end of October, because that's all the information there was. So the recommendations really haven't changed since the last time we got together, except for it got a little sooner. That's based on how fast the data is changing and the increasing numbers that we are seeing within the school district. Already this week, we've had to shift Hoffman Learning Center to distance learning, because there are only a few number of teachers there, and with the teacher absences that we've had and the paraprofessional absences we had, we didn't have enough staff to cover those classes, and so they've had to make that shift already. We've continued to receive recommendations from the Department of Health and Niklet County officials, and Jody is in the meeting tonight. And so if she has anything to add or any questions that you can ask, she'll be here to ask, too. So we believe that it would be the best decision to transition to distance learning beginning on November 16th. That would mean this Friday, we wouldn't have any instructional services, it's usually a distance day, but we wouldn't provide those distance learning services this Friday so that our teachers could plan and prepare to begin distance learning, starting Monday, November 16th. And then all along, the state has provided guidance that if we are in distance learning, if the spread in our community is getting to the point that we can no longer provide in-person instruction, that we would no longer participate in activities either. And based on, based on the fact that you've asked me to follow state guidance, I couldn't recommend continuing our activities if we were in a distance learning mode. Maybe I'll pause there. Our principals are prepared to tell us more about what distance learning would look like at each level, but perhaps I'll ask Chair Leonard what you'd like to do at this point? Do you want us to continue or pause for questions?
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation. Jody, thank you so much for being here. I don't know if you had prepared anything to say, I don't want to cut you off. So if you've prepared something and want to talk, and now is a good time for you, that'd be great. Otherwise, if you're here to answer questions that we have, I appreciate that, too.
I would, thank you for having me tonight, first of all. I would just say that I would agree wholeheartedly with Bill's recommendations. This is moving very fast, and I liked the numbers I presented to you last week better. And unfortunately, I think this is probably what it's going to take for the health and safety of the St. Peter community and the entire Niklet County community.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that recommendation, and I know that you, you don't make that lightly. I think now would be a good time for some questions and conversation. I don't have a starting place, but I do want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to weigh in tonight, but if there's an initial question or comment, I'd look to the board to speak up.
Hey Ben, I noticed we've got a few, or a couple at least, teachers. I don't have everybody on my screen, but maybe some input from the teachers would be great.
Sure. Principals, Superintendent Gronzeth, I don't know how you want to handle that. I do know that there's a lot of teachers on the live stream, or I believe there are a lot of teachers on the live stream. I have spoken to a couple of teachers that have contacted me directly. I want them to feel supported in this, and for some, that might mean speaking up, and for others, that might mean not speaking up directly. So I just want to be sensitive to that, but like, like you said, it would be great to get some feedback. I know that there has been a survey, I know that their union leader is with us tonight, so however is best to handle, handle that.
Keith, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Well, I think maybe we should wait and hear from the principals, you know, as far as a teacher standpoint or the union standpoint, you know, last May, the question was going around, does anybody know anybody with COVID? And everybody was no, well now it's, you know, it's here. You know, it's how can we, how can we avoid all this? Yeah, I think let's wait and hear from the principals, and I think a decision would be really good tonight, because that would give staff a chance to prepare with our A and B Day students on Wednesday and Thursday, to prepare those in-person students for transferring or moving to distance learning.
Thank you very much, Keith, I appreciate that. And just to follow up on what I said earlier, you know, our teachers are professionals, they're going to do whatever we ask them to do. We've received enough comments from the community to know that this is a very divisive issue and that people feel strongly on both sides of this. Please don't contact your teacher about that. This is not their decision. We value their work and their opinions, but whatever we decide tonight isn't, isn't up to the teachers, and it's not there to deal with, it's the board and the superintendent. So I don't know which principal wants to start.
Let me share again here.
So we do have a few slides here to share, and we'll start with early childhood and work our way up to Hoffman Learning Center. So over the last week, our principals group has gotten together and developed distance learning plans, and we certainly know that they can change, but we wanted to make sure that we got some things in place so that in the event we needed to make a quick decision and a quick switch that we have our ducks in a row. So first of all, across the district, distance learning would be delivered through a combination of synchronous or live, in-person, virtual, and asynchronous instruction, which might be recordings, et cetera. At the early childhood level, because the age of our students, it requires parents to be there to support their children in both use of the technology and through the learning activities. We are, we would of course be offering that asynchronous instruction, knowing that parents may be working, children may be in daycare, et cetera, and wouldn't be able to be independent. This year, our early childhood program is using the CSO program to communicate with parents and share activities online. We would also be providing materials for them to use at home, and we've completed, have asked parents to complete a survey, letting us know what types of school supplies and materials they would need at home in the event that we went to distance learning so that they can actively participate. And then with early childhood, we would be offering either small group or individual instruction in that synchronous mode, so in-person. And of course, that would depend on family and student needs and their schedules, and teachers would also be available during their regular preschool times to support families and students. In regards to attendance and work completion, we would be asking families to participate in those activities, whether it be in-person or through that asynchronous model, and posting through CSO what they've completed, whether it be a recording, a picture, et cetera. So that's how we would monitor attendance and work completion in preschool. And then all of us across the district at each of our sites are talking about the possibility of bringing in-person support, bringing students in for additional support. And so once we get our model in place, we'd be taking a look at who might those students be, developing the criteria for that, and then developing plans for schedules and transportation. And so that is, that would be district-wide. Then we'll move on to South Elementary and North Elementary.
Thanks ET. I'll start talking about this first. In North and South Elementaries are together in our distance learning plan because we share so many staff, especially our specialists that go across both of our buildings. So we put this together to be aligned all the way kindergarten through fourth grade. And as Dorian and I started to put this plan together, there's certain elements of it that we took from the spring, but all in all, it's a big shift. And we tried to take components of what's currently working in the routine that's been established with our kindergarten through fourth grade students, one being the A/B day calendar scheduling. So as you know, right now, you know, students are present on school on an every other day basis, and we have about, you know, about 12 students per home. And we have about, you know, about 12 students per homeroom right now on those days, Monday through Thursday. And we want to continue that focus so that teachers and students have some more of that direct instruction. And then the off day students would be continuing to work on their asynchronous learning. So that provides more of a manageable structure for the distance learning to take place, where the application would take place on the off day, but on the day that they would usually be onsite. That's when more of the synchronous learning is going to take place. So we're trying to follow that consistently because the families already have that routine built in, the students have that routine built in, and the teachers have that routine built in as well. And that way, when we are switching, if we do switch in between structures, that stays consistent across those. So teachers will conduct synchronous or live whole group lessons, small group lessons, individual instruction at various times throughout their block on their onsite, on their on-days. And then students will be expected to be online at specific times as directed by their teachers. And we first see that teacher post that activity and who they're meeting with at the beginning of each one of those days. And you can go to the next slide, Mr. Gronseth. There you go.
All right. And as Mr. Doherty alluded to, the fact that we learned a few things about what we did last year. And last year, we did a lot of asynchronous instruction. And we realized, and our distance teachers this year have also been telling us like synchronous lessons is what we need to be doing at this level. In order to deliver new instruction and to be responsive to the needs of the students, we need to be there with them when they are reading, or we're not able to correct them and guide them in building those skills. So for that reason, we've developed a schedule that the students would have three synchronous instructional times with their teacher. And it would be a guided, a guide, excuse me, a reading block, a math block, and then it would, and that reading and math may both include some writing and some other, and incorporation of some other areas as well. But there would also be another block of time that is specifically for guided reading. So that would be a specific time and the schedules would all be shared with the parents. And at the K four level, they likely wouldn't change a whole lot. So that schedule would be shared. They'd know what time they're having their reading. And then there would be a 25 to 30 minute block with just the teacher working either individually with a student or working with them in a small group setting. So we have a little bit of flexibility in our schedule because we also would be offering a synchronous live session with the specialist teacher, meaning art, music, FIED, or STEAM STEM. And that's on a rotating basis. And that would be a 30 minute block that would be somewhere in that morning slot. So with that, we've also added an instructional block at the end of the day. Now, keep in mind, those are the blocks of times. It does not mean that your student, the students would be online with teachers at all of those times. Somewhere in that instructional block, there may be one 25 minute period, but then they would not have a session of individualized reading up in the morning. The other piece that we have added is we want to make sure that we have time for teachers to respond to the needs of students and questions that parents may have. So we've built in that very first hour of the day from 7:30 to 8:30, that would be the opportunity for teachers to respond to emails, make phone calls to parents, assist in any way that they, they can in helping that student be successful with their distance learning. And then again, at the end of the day, from 2:00 to 3:30, the teachers would be available to take calls. They would also be possibly recording, doing some asynchronous recording of lessons that they would be pushing out on the students' opposite day. But they, and planning within their grade level teams to make sure that the instruction is aligned throughout the entire grade level. But we know that we want to be able to respond to parents as quickly as possible, any tech issues that came up. We really tried to like, look at that information that we received from the survey about things that were going well and what were the things that we needed to work on. And we're trying to put some pieces in place so that we can help support people. I know that that synchronous instruction is really going to be about teaching families how to set timers on iPads because it will be as simple as it will go that invite for their synchronous time will go to their iPad. They will push on the meet link and their teacher will be there. Putting in codes and having to type things in can, or trying to even use QR codes, we found that that was not working for our students. So actually sending that direct link right to the Meet app on their iPad. We're actually going to test that out for our conferences this year coming up next week. So we'll be using that same approach to communicate with our parents, parents at conferences. So that is our schedule.
And then a couple of other components that we want to talk about are attendance, participation, and grading. And so unlike the spring where all of the instruction took place asynchronous, where students logged in, you know, basically when it would work out in their schedule. This schedule, as Dorian talked about, is based on certain times every other day that they are expected to be online with their teachers, their classmates. And they'll need to be present during that. It's so fundamentally important to have that direction by their professional teacher. So we're talking about attendance is going to continue to happen the way it has been. And students are doing a fabulous job at being responsible, logging in Infinite Campus, checking themselves in as being present, which usually just takes a minute or two since everybody has their own devices and they can check themselves there. But also, we need to see participation during those live or synchronous lessons as well. So obviously, we're always going to work with the student and the families to try to remove any barriers to getting those items done. We certainly want to make sure that it's, that it's possible for students to be there during their live synchronous time. But teachers are also going to check on that participation level for reading, for math, for writing, for specialists, and just to make sure that that's happening as well and keep track of that in their grade book on Infinite Campus as well. It can have an adverse effect on attendance if that continues to be an issue as far as participation or lack thereof. So teachers will need to keep an eye on that as well and communicate with the families because that learning is not going to happen with that engagement with their teacher and their classmates. Grading is, is of course, the emphasis is going to be on providing meaningful learning opportunities for our students and then continuing to build on positive connections between students and their teachers. That's the foundation of all good learning. But we will continue to provide like a rating system of how students are doing, not unlike our current reporting system, which isn't a percentage breakdown per se. It's more of a standards-based grading or a rating with explanations of where students are consistently performing in their specific content areas. And that's it for attendance, participation, and grading.
All right. And at the middle school, just like the buildings who have presented before us, distance learning will be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. That synchronous instruction will really be emphasized at this go-around as compared to what we were able to offer in the spring. In that synchronous instruction, there will be daily Google meets that teachers will provide. And during that time, there will be direct whole group instruction, small group and individual instruction during 55-minute blocks, which we'll see on the next slide here in just a second. Teachers will also be available to provide that extra instruction during office hours. And that asynchronous instruction is really designed to accommodate those students who are unable to attend those daily synchronous lessons, and that will be provided through. So one of the things that's different about our plan is we plan to eliminate the A-day, B-day schedule that we've been using during hybrid instruction. And in that, our sections will recombine, meaning that A and B students will all go through the same schedule. And what will happen is those A and B students will move chronologically through their block schedule, receiving those daily synchronous lessons. And you can see the schedule there. We'll start our day at 8:30. And those blocks will continue just like they do on a normal day. The times are just condensed into 55-minute sections. And one thing I want to stress is that we, we don't plan to have, you know, our teachers hold court for 55 minutes. Really what we want to use that time for, for example, is maybe the first 10 minutes is we spend reviewing the previous day's concepts. We preview new learning targets or go over the day's directions. We go through the content that's provided on Google Classroom. And the next 10 minutes, really that's when we dive into those concepts. We provide that whole group instruction. We work through some examples. And many of our kids at that point will be ready to move on and then start the work. For those students who aren't ready, they can stick around on that Google Meet and get further instruction. Beyond that, maybe the next 10 minutes is some small grouping. And then the last 15 minutes of that 55-minute block is really set aside for students who are working on that work. They know exactly where their teacher's at and how to contact them because they'll be right on the other end of that computer. We're really hoping that it will eliminate or minimize at least the need for those emails, which maybe due to the schedule, don't get answered for a few hours. So having those teachers available in those chunks, we think will be very positive. And then from one to two will be office hours and intervention time for our teachers to really connect with students who need that extra support. Next slide. And then for us, attendance will be very similar to how it is right now. During our hybrid schedule on those distance learning days, students will still be required to self-report that attendance once per day on that Infinite Campus portal. Work completion, all of the work will be completed via Google Classroom.
All right. The high school distance learning plan brings us back to the A-day, B-day hybrid schedule continuity that we've had going. So our, our kids who are who are A-day kids already will continue to know that they need to log in for synchronous learning on Mondays and Wednesdays. And our B-day kids and families will know that their days are Tuesdays and Thursdays. We feel like, like at the high school level, kids, kids are able to, to figure out a schedule and be a little, work a little bit more independently than, than perhaps some of our, our younger kids at the middle school. They, there may also be more expected from individual teachers of kids, obviously, but A-day and B-day kids can expect their schedules to continue the same as they have been just online. Though the only thing that's changing, if Mr. Gronseth, if you could, if you could forward to the Friday schedule, if that is still on this slideshow, and I don't believe that it is. But our Friday schedule, the only difference, oh, it is here over on the, on the other side. The Friday schedule currently starts virtually at nine o'clock. And in distance learning, it would start at 8:30. It's a half an hour earlier start time for our kids for consistency throughout the course of the week. And that Friday, that Friday time, that virtual schedule may or may not be required by your teachers, but it would be expected that you're available, that students are available at those times, should they have a synchronous course. Otherwise, the, it's daily lessons and assignments via their Google Classrooms as provided by their teachers. Teachers will still be able to have daily office hours and, and will be available to kids throughout the day, throughout, from 7:30 until 3:30, unless they're, they're in a synchronous lesson. So hopefully, everybody will be able to get their questions answered in a timely fashion. We also had a couple of other, when, when talking, when working through this with the middle school, there are a few other upper grade level considerations to take into account with keeping this, keeping this a hybrid, A-day, B-day schedule. High school kids and families, we found much appreciated knowing continuously throughout the school year, hopefully not the whole school year, what their schedule will be like. And so whether it's hybrid or distance, it will remain the same. For many reasons, some are helping siblings through their courses. Others are, others have to work, others have activities that, that they need to be scheduled around. The expectations for our students will continue to be the same as they are during, during hybrid learning. Although we are hoping, and correct me if I am misspeaking in front of all of the people who have logged in tonight. Thank you for being here and for showing your interest in our, in our learning model. It is greatly appreciated and it shows how much everybody cares. The, the attendance taking will look a little bit different in that every student will, will be logging in daily to take their attendance on Infinite Campus. And Chris hasn't spoken up, so I wasn't wrong. The teacher expectations, everybody can read through this, but teacher expectations will change slightly during distance learning. Teachers will have the weekly lesson plans and expectations posted on the first day of the school week, whatever that is. And daily classroom activities posted by 8:30. So there shouldn't be, we found it, it's really hard if there are any surprises for kids and families. If suddenly there's a Google Meet that they're expected to be in that they didn't know about earlier in the week and they have other plans. So we would like to have those, those meetings and expectations posted on the first day of the week.
All right. For Rock Bend, we are staying pretty consistent with the high school model. The Rock Bend program, for those of you that don't know, is only 28 students. And we have two homerooms of 14 students each. And they are currently following an A-day, B-day schedule. About seven students in each homeroom each day. It's very personalized learning. And so you'll see, we also have a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. They will follow the A-day, B-day schedule for their support courses. We have some students receiving ELL services, special education services, and students in need of social emotional support. So they will check in synchronously on their A-day or B-day, Monday through Thursday, and have that support asynchronously or through office hours on Friday. Our students also engage in work experience and have a work seminar course. So they will again meet with that course Monday through Thursday on their A-day, B-day. And our students at Rock Bend will have synchronous core content instruction every day, Monday through Thursday. Again, they have small groups, very personalized learning. So we feel it's important for them to connect with those core content teachers daily. And then core content will be asynchronous on Friday. And then all students at Rock Bend qualify to come in for additional services because they are at risk for graduation or currently behind in, in credits for graduation. So on that afternoon, they may be coming in by appointment to meet with their teachers in person. So we're very grateful that they will have that opportunity. Then again, Friday, that asynchronous support and personal learning plans. Kind of an extension of Rock Bend is our extended day credit recovery program. We were scheduled to begin this after school on November 16th. We were planning a 315 to 515 program. Given everything that's up in the air right now, we plan to postpone until November 30th. But the schedule would, that we're proposing is actually to bring the kids in during the school day when we have our teachers here from one to three. And those teachers would then kind of have some flipped office hours a little bit later. But students would register in advance for the courses and then hopefully be eligible for our district transportation. Kind of our idea is that the kids that have failed courses are probably the kids that are going to need some additional support. So having them onsite two days a week and asynchronously once per week, doing that credit recovery and getting some extra support, we're hoping prevents additional failed courses. Our credit recovery teachers are also prepared to support distance learning academic practices and helping kids organize. A lot of our students that don't do well with distance learning just have some skill deficiencies in those areas. And then another benefit is that our school counselors are here. And so if those students are needing social and emotional support or help with their graduation planning, they'll be onsite to get that support as well.
Excellent. Thank you all very, very much. We do have one more, sorry.
The Huffman Learning Center is a program that serves students at the L.A. Huffman Center. And up until this point, we have had about half of the students in the morning and half in the afternoon. And then taking their rest of their instruction through remote learning. And in a distance learning model, we would, all of the students would remain at the L.A. Huffman Center and instruction would be provided through video conferencing. These students have a higher level of supervision needs and the resources that are available are a little bit different than they are for the the resources that are available are a little bit different than they are for the other schools. And so um, working hand in hand with the Leo A. Huffman Center is um, is, is an important part of this as they provide the supervision while we provide um, the instruction. And um, from the technology uh, side across the district, we've also taken some additional considerations in places to uh, support our faculty and our uh, families. We've uh, going to be putting in place additional equipment for teachers, um, additional monitors, uh, doc cams, um, getting full-size iPads for our kindergarten and a lot of our early childhood students. And then some new Chromebooks for uh, middle school. And then um, last year during the distance learning, um, as students weren't present, we were able to shift some staff around and um, and uh, staff a community help desk. And so uh, provide some additional resources for families in order to um, get uh, technical support if needed throughout the distance learning process. So um, trying to put into place a few other things that'll aid in the transition and the uh, and the delivery of instruction in a, in a distance learning model.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. I know that board members have questions. I have a couple of questions uh, from uh, the email um, that I have kind of consolidated. We've, we've received uh, several uh, into a couple of questions. So we have a few parents out there who say, my kid really needs individualized in, instruction uh, during this, and that might be an IEP. That might be, my kid needs a little extra help in math. Um, I don't know who wants to uh, talk about that. I don't think that grade level was specific, but just sort of our district philosophy around that.
Maybe I'll start and then others can, can jump in. It's one of the things that I wanted to point out is a, a major difference from the state guidance that we had last spring. Last spring, the guidance said uh, we were not to bring any students into the building. That has changed this year, that we can bring in students who, uh, who really need that extra boost. And we've uh, developed a process where a student's IEP team or case manager or teachers are really working through some key questions to make sure that we are bringing in students who really need that, that in-person um, instruction. And that does look a little bit different at each level, but all levels uh, will have a way of considering um, which students to bring in for, for how much or which classes. I'll let any of the, anybody jump in that has more to say about that.
I'll go ahead and start at the elementary level. Um, we do have teams that are working on that. We are looking at the needs of some of our uh, ELL students and our intervention students, along with our students who currently have an IEP. And we are working through a rubric to determine who are the students that would be best served by some additional time. And with their details to work out, such as transportation, um, some of those pieces, but we really would see it as a, a intervention that could be done on the student's off day. Because that is the area that we noticed that most of the students were struggling with. Especially with their language barriers or IEP needs, that they really needed to have some of that classroom instruction material modified for them. So this would be a way for us to bring them in, they would get a little more service time with their um, teacher. And they would also have the opportunity to have some support in completing that distance learning. And the nice thing is, we've now had these students for a quarter. So we, we can take that information along with some of the assessments that we have and really um, you know, have a pretty good grasp of, of who would be best served by this program, but also using a rubric, so it isn't, oh, this person gets to come, but this one doesn't. Really just taking a look at what the needs are and basing it on, on that need.
Yeah, that's exactly um, the components I was gonna share as well. Luckily, the state of Minnesota um, has shared a tool or a rubric in order to take a look at individual students' needs. And like Mizelke mentioned, you know, students that are going to score on that rubric in the needs category are showing um, you know, an academic um, deficit, a social emotional uh, goals on their learning uh, plans. Um, barriers to language. And the, you know, what we're trying to do with our blocks of instruction at the K-4 level, but really at the middle and high school level, is align those times, um, because we know you know, that distance learning can be a challenge um, for a good percentage of students. Um, and so we want to try to take advantage of what has not potentially been working in um, on their off days, like Dorian had mentioned, and see if we can get some of these students that qualify on school sites on those days. Um, another challenge along with that, and hopefully we can, we'll figure out answers to that, um, is just that transportation component too. Because we certainly don't want um, the ability or the inability of a student to get to school, to bar them from some in-person instruction if it's, if it's needed.
Excellent, thank you very much. Um, we do have a couple of other questions, but I wanna hold those for a different point in the meeting because they, I think, have to do more with coming back um, from distance. So what, what questions do board members have or comments?
Well, this is Tracy Stewie. Um, and I have questions about a number of things, but first I want to just talk about the, the data, if we could. Can just kind of back it up to the beginning, I think that would make the most sense for me. But I'm just looking at the age distribution. And, okay, my first comment is, I really want to understand the data too, so that way when we are looking at bringing our kids back, which hopefully we'll start doing, like, we should be looking at that like the week after, whenever we decide for them to go into distance learning, we should be already looking at when we can bring them back. Are you guys there? Because my internet's really wacky.
Tr- Tracy, you went max headroom, I didn't hear the, didn't hear the, the meat of your question. Uh, we're still here, uh, I see that Superintendent Grand Seth has uh, shared the slide again. Joe was the, the age distribution of uh, COVID K. Tracy, I don't know if you're here.
Can you?
Okay, great. We can hear you.
Okay, I just went on my cellphone, I don't know, my internet's wonky, I don't know, maybe the kids are playing too many games, but. Um, okay, so we got the age distribution, and I was kind of surprised to see the eleven to twenty be like up so high. Um, and then I saw the dates on that was October first to November ninth. So in the future, it would be helpful for us, I think, to have like the, all of the graphs have the same dates on to the greatest extent possible. Because I was wondering why we were pulling back to October first on that, instead of sticking with the October thirteenth to the twenty-seventh, or I'm sorry, the October twenty-sixth to November ninth. Um, and then when I was looking at it and I was comparing it to what we had last time, I'm wondering if something went wonky, because when we looked at this data last week for the October thirteenth to the twenty-seventh, the fifty-one to sixty-year-olds, it said we had twenty-one. But when I look at the October first to the November ninth, which is just a broader range, but also includes October thirteenth to twenty-second, it looks like we only have like, less than ten. So I'm just kind of wondering what, you know what I mean? First off, we have, should have the dates the same, but secondly, wondering if there's something maybe that we need to look at. Not that that's gonna necessarily decide what we do tonight, but I do think that we need to figure out what those data, what those ages actually are. And I would like to know with that eleven to twenty-year-olds, and it looks like we're up like above sixty. That, I know we hate always just, you know, not including Gus Davis or including Gus Davis, but that does include those, those older kids too. So it would be nice to see that broken on a little bit more, but. So yeah, so for, I guess the big thing is, is the data doesn't make sense to me a little bit because of the discrepancy with that fifty-one to sixty-year-old being weird. And secondly, when we look at it, I would like to see all the dates be the same, instead of us pulling a broader range for one of the data points and then keeping it at like the two weeks for the other ones, if that makes sense.
So the, all of this data and these graphs came from the county, so um, if Jody, if I could have you speak to them, I'm not sure if, I know that I didn't get these directly from you. I got them from um, Brianna and Cassandra or Cassie, but I'm hoping maybe you can speak to that.
Sure, um, I, I see the difference between, I, I agree with you about the dates, that makes it a little confusing. But I see the difference between the two charges. One is in the entirety of Nicola County, so the one that we looked at at our work session last week um, is the entirety of Nicola County versus um, the Saint Peter area is, is the new data. And that is just the zip codes in the Saint Peter School District.
Makes sense, I feel a little better about the data now, because I was beginning to wonder what was going on, but I would like the dates to be consistent.
Sure, and, and we could get s- some more of those done for you. And um, it's really hard to give you a, a picture of Gus Davis. Um, you know, I, I should mention, the students right now are on a lay low two-week period till the semester ends, just uh, or till it's time for them to go home for Thanksgiving break. So they've really been asked to just lay low because the numbers on campus have gone up. We are doing a testing event, a saliva testing event there on Friday. We are hoping to test uh, two thousand students and staff. And that will, you know, that will certainly bring the numbers up more. It's hard to tell what the exact numbers are at Gus Davis, because we're not seeing all the cases come through Nicola County. Students use their addresses at home. So like I just had a student that was, you know, from another nearby county. And so even though I did the interview and, and Gus Davis did all the case investigation too, that person will be assigned to another county. So um, it's not necessarily an accurate representation. So I think probably, and then there's also some rapid testing involved, which tells me that our numbers are gonna keep going up. There's, the state has just, um, Gus Davis is involved in a rapid testing project for students and staff that are symptomatic, and they can get an instant result. But um, there's, since it's a new project and new, new details, new technology, it, it's not coming through the system in a timely manner. So those, those numbers are unfortunately going to be higher than they are. But looking at the Gus Davis um, COVID dashboard, since August fifteenth, there have been a hundred and twenty-seven cases at Gus Davis. Current positive student cases are sixty-five, and current positive employee cases are one. So again, you know, there, there are gonna be employees that work, um, that live in Blue Earth County, that type of thing. But so they're not all gonna be assigned to Nicola County, so you can't automatically go to the numbers and just subtract a hundred and twenty-seven. But at least it gives you a little better idea. Um, just a couple more numbers off the dashboard, as long as we're there. Um, total students in isolation and quarantine, as of, um, I believe this came out today, a hundred and seventy-eight in students in, so, so that number was from today, I'm sorry, but that's since August fifteenth. The total students in isolation quarantine on campus is fifty, fifty-four, and employees are eight. I'm sorry, I read that wrong. Total students in isolation quarantine, a hundred and seventy-eight, that is on campus and off campus. So the total number of students, I'm sorry. And then the students that are on campus in isolation or quarantine are fifty-four. A lot of students choose to go home, and then employees in isolation or quarantine are eight. So it doesn't give you the whole picture, Tracy, but I hope it gives you a little better idea.
It really does, and I think a lot better that, that one was just the Saint Peter area, because that, that helps, but yes. And then in the future, if they're gonna pull the ages again, I'm guessing they can pull that however they want. And I know we want to kind of stick with the decades, but just for our purposes, it might be nice to see that what is that eleven to eighteen-year-old range, and then to kind of take off the nineteen and twenties? It might be interesting to look at that. And again, for me, that's for like when we're looking forward to when we're gonna get these kids back in school, because that's my goal.
Yeah, Tracy, just to speak to that, and, and Jody and, and Director Carlson would look to you. Uh, one advantage uh, that we may have in thinking about coming back to school is Gus Davis students are going remote after Thanksgiving, correct? So the data that we look at for the month of December will not have Gus Davis students for the most part on campus, is that correct?
That is largely correct, there will still be some students on campus, but um, yeah, largely they will not be.
So that should help us, and, and I would just also clarify that um, we're talking a lot about students, but we also have a lot of staff, um, adults that are in our buildings and um, and that we wanna, that we wanna keep safe and that we need to staff our buildings to uh, to stay open. And that's one of the issues that we're having right now is with the quarantine um, requirements, uh, we have come very close to not being able to, and, and Hoffman today and, and the middle school and things. So that is another consideration for the distance model.
Chair Leonard, if I could, uh, the one nice thing I think that uh, that if we do go to distance learning, we might be able to change, because I believe uh, Mr. Grand Seth said the number, the current number of cases uh, on the ninth. There was, it was the one with the red line, was at eighty-two. And uh, whether we go with sixty-five or sixty-one, that, that lowers what it is in the population. And while some, while there may be some Gus Davis students that aren't reported in uh, in our school district, there are plenty that are, correct, Jody? And so, starting on the twentieth is their last day on uh, on campus. Uh, as far as, I should, let me be specific, they will start distance learning on the twenty-third, instead of after Thanksgiving. And uh, they have to commit to, if they want to stay on campus, they have to stay through Thanksgiving break. They do not want students to go home and come back to campus. And with that big group uh, being taken out of the equation, I'm all for distance learning until Thanksgiving, but I think at some point we should, maybe if, Jody, if you could, you know, kind of help us really get the numbers of, of uh, where that, where Gus Davis falls in that eleven to twenty and twenty to, or twenty-one to thirty range, how many of those are really Gus Davis students? I would hope that we would consider going back to hybrid after Thanksgiving. I, I think, Ben, you've made this point before, and I think uh, Mr. Grand Seth has as well, that they are, Mr. Grand Seth tonight, they are a mem- members of our community. While two-thirds are doing quarantine at home, uh, over two-thirds, I still can respect the fact that they're still here. And uh, they are being encouraged to leave on the twenty-first and twenty-second. Kids probably won't, but the ones that go home for Thanksgiving are, are being told not to come back. And uh, I think that that's, that will, so that'll leave us with international students who don't want to go home, because if their country has a spike, they may not be able to get back. And, but the population will be very small at Gus Davis.
Yeah, thank you, I would add that, uh, and Jody, I don't mean to speak for you, but I think some of our discussion last meeting uh, was around the fact that we don't think that this is, this is a temporary spike, that we do think that these numbers are climbing. Um, I think, from my perspective, the nature of infectious disease is the more cases you have out there, the more potential people you have get infected, and it kind of grows, and it's not quick to come back down. And that people's behavior in this pandemic may uh, not be helping that. And Thanksgiving, traditionally a family holiday, could be a point where we see more infections because people aren't choosing to stay home, they're choosing to have those family events that have been proven to spread the disease, I guess.
I, I think you're absolutely right, Chair Leonard. I, that's my biggest concern there is, you know, I, I feel like we could limp along a little bit longer, even though the numbers are not good. But I'm worried about what happens to the students with Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. Um, you know, after Thanksgiving, I think a week to, a week and a half later, we're gonna see a spike in cases. The same's gonna happen for Christmas, it's just, it, it's just a time where we're more social. And I think what we're really seeing in the community as a whole is we're seeing a lot of COVID fatigue. People are tired of this, they're tired of wearing masks, they're tired of, you know, following the rules, and so they're kind of doing whatever they want. We really saw a spike with Halloween, and that's still just coming on board. But those weekends right before Halloween too, a lot of um, parties, social gatherings, weddings, that type of thing. And we're seeing that was reflected in the numbers. So I definitely um, see what you're saying, Member Carlson, and that And we're seeing that was reflected in the numbers. So I definitely see what you're saying, Member Carlson, and that that's a good idea. And, and maybe we can figure out a way to start breaking down that data for you on a more regular basis. You know, maybe it's a weekly basis, maybe it's for, you know, every board meeting that you have so that it can reflect the questions that you specifically asked tonight. But unfortunately, I don't think the numbers are going to get better in the near term. We're really seeing a spike in the numbers statewide. It's really getting to the drastic point and a downside of that. And another reason to take a step back and go to distance learning is because of the lack of hospital beds. Hospital beds are filling up quickly with people with COVID and, and with the flu season thrown in there too. That's, that's going to be bad news. We are not going to have enough places to care for all these people.
Thank you very much. I did see right before the meeting that unfortunately Children's Hospital in St. Paul has 13 students. In the hospital right now and five in the ICU. So I know that people have talked about this being a virus that doesn't affect young people as much. But one's too many, five is way too many, 13 is way, way too many. And, you know, and, and we've got a lot of, again, staff to, to consider as well, so.
This is Tracy Stew again, and I don't want to come across as the person like I, I care about COVID, I really, really do. And I respect that it is a virus and we all need to take it serious. But is there any, like, I'm curious what other fellow board members feel about, like, with the numbers how they are, okay. Is there a way for us to justify keeping our elementary in person for a couple more weeks? And having the, just the middle school and high school go to distance learning? My thinking is, is that at that point, if they stay in for those couple more weeks, we would have our Gustavus kind of drop off. Our potential Halloween bump would drop off and it would be before Thanksgiving. I mean, it's just giving those kids, even if that's only two, four extra days. The, the days are so valuable. I don't know, maybe I'm just all out there, but I'm curious what other people think about that. And I don't want to be the person that doesn't care because I care and I love the human life, but I just am curious.
I know, I know you care. I, we all do. I would say, I would not be in favor of that and I'll explain why. I, I see our job here is looking at guidance from the state. I'm not a health expert. I, I, in many ways, I just work here. My job is to make decisions based on the best information that we have. I think the approach of the state and the counties has been very methodically data driven. That's great. We can, we can hold on to that. That we have gates, thresholds that are met by that 14 day case rate. And right now, our case rate is above the threshold or it's, it's got passed through the gate that says we should be distanced. In both elementary and high school, middle school. I'm comfortable with the state's guidance on that. Because yes, we're, we're trying to do education, we're trying to implement it and do the best we can. We're also part of a larger picture, which is public health. Like we didn't ask for this problem. There are a lot of things that we can't control about the problem, but we still have a job to do in this problem. But I think part of that trade off is. We have the state guidance, it's telling us to do this thing. We might not like that, but it's part of a, a greater picture to suppress the spread of the virus. I take no joy in taking elementary kids out of school at all, but I just, that's what we're being asked to do and I, I think that's the right thing to do.
So, but our numbers right now are per 10,000 numbers. If I'm looking at the right piece of paper, because I have about 60 of them sitting around me, but aren't they right now like at 35 and 33?
Those would be the numbers that were active two weeks ago. So those are, that would be, I think, our most recent official number.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and that was where we were two weeks ago. Then, you know, the counties, it takes, take the number and they scrub them and like, oh, you know, this, this, this actually was a, a Lassure or, yeah, Lassure County. Infection rather than Nicola, or get those all straightened out. And then they published those numbers. It's really, those are solid. But things are moving so quickly now that we're looking at having to pay our hat on our more current data. Because no amount of washing is going to flatten the spike that we're seeing.
Chair Leonard, if I, if I could, I wanted to go back to this slide. Oh wait, I'm, I'm not sharing it, am I? Hang on, let me share it. I wanted to go back to this slide because I, I think even more than the, the county number. We have to look at the number of people, not just who have positive cases, and that is what the county numbers are made up of. But the number of people that we are having in quarantine. We have 78 students who currently are quarantining, both at the elementary level. We actually have more at the elementary level than we do at the high school level, 37 at the high school, 41 at elementary. And then we have six staff in the early childhood in elementary and three staff at the middle and high school. Four at community ed, two in maintenance. Now I want to add that these people who are quarantining are on top of people who are out for other reasons. So all of those normal reasons that people are out, they have, they have strep, they have cold, they have whatever going on, have to take care of a sick child. And so this is on top of those usual and normal absences that we're seeing. And know that at the, at the middle school today, we had six staff members out, four of them did not have substitutes. And I know John worked some, some rearranging magic to make all of those absences work and have adults working with kids. And so I, I don't want to downplay that the number of people that were missing just for other reasons and for quarantine, not just the positive cases.
And I, Tracy, I just wanted to add that I looked it up. You know, we saw the chart that Brad Chambers put together earlier and, and the website was referenced that. And I just checked that website because I've been checking that as well for the current numbers, we're at 65.4 according to that, so. So we're pretty high up there.
Yeah. So then I think like we need to keep looking at that then moving forward. And when we see, when we start seeing those future numbers looking down, we should act on that appropriately then as well. Do you know what I mean? Because you know what I mean? We need to look at it both ways.
Absolutely.
I, I would totally agree. And that's, that's what I look for is I look for the trends. And if, you know, right now, if our number was what it is and the future numbers I saw were coming down, I would not be making this recommendation. But because they're trending up in the future numbers, we're making that recommendation. Same will be true when we are coming back. That's what we're going to be looking for. We're going to be looking at those numbers, we're going to be watching our, our specific school data. Are we seeing people with positive cases? Are we seeing them having to quarantine? But really looking at those trends. And if we see it trending downward, I think that, you know, again, we'll be talking with Jody. We'll be talking with the regional center and the county is saying, all right, we're thinking we're, we're good to, to come back now. And, you know, Jody could probably speak to that. I know that you've worked with other, other districts as well through this process. And so maybe I'll stop talking and let you talk.
So some of these other districts and that still have their case six in person, are they just not being recommended by the state to go? To just to tie to distance learning?
The state is, the state is really cracking down Tracy on really looking at those numbers and looking at the learning models in the county. So we've been meeting with everybody. So I've been meeting with Matt Kato and Nick Glid, I met with Mbed today. Everybody is moving towards a more restrictive model. Basically, if you, if your number, if, if your learning model doesn't match what the, the case rate number is, then you pretty much have to explain why that is. And when you asked about the case rates earlier, so the, the one that we have on record is 35.22. And that runs through October 24th. So kind of like, I think it was Drew that was talking about how, how they kind of look at those numbers and then they pause them. So the 65 number that we just had, again, on another piece of paper. The 65 number that we were using, the 65.12, that is the 14 day period that ends on November 3rd. So basically what's going to happen is every Thursday, a higher number is going to keep coming out. We're not going to see 65 this week, but we will see somewhere in between the 30, the 35 and the 65. And so then, you know, people are really going to start to wonder why we don't have a learning model that reflects what the guidance is for that.
And I know we're supposed to, I know we're supposed to keep our, it's hard when the neighbors bobbers always, you know, doing something different than ours. You know what I mean? It's kind of tough to fill well, so.
Yeah, and there was a meeting of the superintendents in Nicola and Blue Earth County that we were included on. Let's see today, I, it's COVID time, so I have a hard time telling you what day it is. It was yesterday and they all met and that was one of the things they really talked about was, you know, we all need to look at these, these numbers. The numbers are climbing in the counties, both Blue Earth and Nicola County, they're also climbing in the state. And we, you know, everybody wants to kind of move, not alone, they kind of want to move in tandem. So that, that, you know, St. Peter isn't saying, let's go to distance and, and somebody else is saying, Matt Kato is saying, well, let's do all in person. So they kind of talked a lot about that and, and I think the superintendents have really connected on that. But we did find in that meeting that some of the smaller districts are still leaning towards less restrictive models. And I'm not quite sure how long that will last.
Just to add that if you look at those numbers that I referenced earlier and, and Jody referenced, if you look at the statewide, there are six counties in the state. That are within the guidance to have hybrid elementary. There are no counties that are able to have in-person of any kind totally. And there are 81 counties that are all distance according to the guidance. So this is a statewide problem and you look at the news and you look at Iowa and the Dakotas and Wisconsin, it's a, it's a regional problem.
Um, okay, this is the last thing I'm going to say, at least for the next five minutes. So in an effort for everyone to kind of understand the community and us as well, is it possible? I mean, I know that, you know, the admin team, you guys are reviewing these numbers all the time and like how many people are out. Well, that won't so much apply if we're in distance learning. But is there a way to have like a little COVID dashboard? And I'm not talking about making a full-time job for somebody, but just something simple that people can reference to see where we're at. I know, like, I saw Matt Kato had something, we don't need to go into that great of detail, but maybe for the community to understand where we're at and how we're basing our decisions, it would be helpful. But again, I'm not looking to make a full-time job for anybody and I'm going to mute my mic.
Thank you for saying that Tracy. We have already created the dashboard and we are planning to put it up. As, you know, I, I know Chris has been a very busy guy, but we do have that created and it will go up and will list. The cumulative cases for students and staff, the current cases and the current quarantines. And the percentage that is, you know, the, we, we took the current cases and quarantines and the percentage of students and staff that that equates to.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you.
I guess I do have one more thing I should mention when regards to our numbers. We are planning a community testing event in St. Peter next Tuesday at the St. Peter Community Center. It will be a no barriers testing event. So anybody is welcome to come, you don't need to have symptoms, you don't need to have insurance. From 12 to 6, we'll be running that. But what we are seeing is when those events are held, there's usually about a 10% or greater positivity rate. We are hoping to do about 10% of the St. Peter and St. Peter population that day. So that would be 1,300 tests. And then if you took 10% of that as a positivity rate, you could potentially see our cases grow by 130 next week alone. So just, just so you know that in advance to factor in, one, I want you to know so that anybody that needs to be tested comes to get tested. It'll be a great setup. We're going to try to move people through very quickly. But two, the numbers will increase. And the good part about that though, is what they're, where they're seeing when they have these testing events. Is that about two thirds of the population that is positive is asymptomatic. So that might help us with some of that transmission. So if you figured that, you know, two thirds, what, 70, 70 of 130 cases may be asymptomatic and we could stop that spread, that would be pretty impactful. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. And I, I do want to add that when we were talking about that in the meeting, I was assured that we could kind of separate, we could scalpel that. Those numbers out of the data and look at it with and without that data. But I also remember hearing in that meeting that the, the testing sites were having, on average, 25% of the tests were coming back positive.
Yes, yes, I collect, I was looking for numbers for that today and they range from 10 to 25%, depending on what kind of testing is done. The saliva testing has been especially positive. I don't know if that's because it's more like likely people that are interested in a nasal swab or, you know, people that maybe weren't going otherwise. Because this is an easier test to do, although you still have to gather up a lot of spit, it's a little more difficult than it looks. But, so I, you know, for whatever reason, that, that rate is up as much as 25%. So yeah, we will see a number of cases and, you know, you talked a lot about scalping last week, scalping the numbers and trimming off, you know, who that is. And that will be easy to do for the testing about next week.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Gronseth, would we be able to amplify that test using our district's communication? Pathway is certainly anyone speaking tonight, but, or listening tonight, but that would be good to get out to district families.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I ask a question please?
Absolutely. Dr. Soderland, what's your question?
I, I have a question for Jody. First, a quick statement. As an independent school district, we're trying to make a decision on what to do with respect to the distance learning tonight. And we're not, to my knowledge, none of us are a public health experts. And we're being asked to make a public health decision. So I'm going to ask Jody if I could, please. Jody, if we go to distance learning, is that going to, would we expect to see a reduction in the cases? That are being transmitted within the community?
My opinion would be yes, that we would. If we start staying home, settling things down a little bit. The college students go home, we go to distance learning, I think probably within a month, we'll start to see a decrease. The only wild card there, Dr. Soderland, is the holidays. I'm not quite sure how to, how to characterize that, but if, if it were just a normal month, I would say definitely.
Thank you.
You know, one, one thing to add to that too, that I think that this is, this is a serious decision. And I think there is COVID fatigue, like was mentioned earlier. But I think local governments, school districts, the state, the more we make decisions like this, I think it reinforces. The fact that we are in a real tight spot. And the, we are going to start to lose more and more things that are important to us if we don't change our behavior. So I, I think that there are, like you said, there are specific benefits to this. But a side benefit might be to get people to actually change their behavior because of a decision like this too.
Can I, I'd like to put some input in if it's okay. Okay, this is Vicky and I just, you know, I, I really love the kids being.
Okay, this is Vicky, and I just, you know, I, I really love the kids being in school. I mean, they need to be in school. But the, the numbers are great. Um, it's nice to have those to fall back on, but I think if we're all just really thinking about it as a parent, as a grandparent, as a community worker, to, we need to just, I think, take the kids out. Um, my big thing is if we keep switching around and telling the parents, okay, we're just going to wait, and when the numbers go down, we'll let you know. I think that's so confusing for everybody. I just think that if we would say, okay, we're going out at this time and we're coming back at this time. If the numbers go down, hallelujah, you know, great. But give them a little bit of time for it to really settle in. And, and what are we really talking here? We're talking the holiday. And I think it was, um, Annette who had said last time, really, it's nine in-person days that we're really talking about here. Otherwise, we're out for, what is it, four days at Thanksgiving time and a week at Christmas time? I mean, I just, it doesn't really seem to make an issue to me. I just think that for on the safe side, for everybody's benefit, that it's probably a good idea to pull and then set a time that we're coming back. Um, and that's just my opinion, but that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you for that reminder, um, Member Hager. I, on the recommendation, I did mean to put that we would, um, be, if we did this, we would be in distance learning until at least January fourth, which is the end of uh, the winter break. And then we would come, we would be coming together regularly to look at those numbers, and if we didn't, if those numbers don't come down by that time, we may have to extend it a little farther. Um, but my hope would be to come back on the fourth.
I think that that's being fair to even the teachers. I mean, they must be in kind of a scareful position right now, kind of worried about what's going on. So I just think that um, it's probably, I don't know, I guess this, that's just my opinion. I, I just think to be on the safe side, it's a good idea.
Chair Leonard?
Absolutely, John.
Yeah, Jody, when I look at the numbers, uh, Mr. Gronseth put up eighty-two between November first and seventh, and Gustavus having, uh, either, if you want to use the fifth or the ninth, fif- fifth was sixty-one, the ninth is sixty-five. How many of those are a part of that eighty-two? I mean, if you had to ballpark it, I mean, you said somebody left, somebody got reported in a different county? One of the Gustavus students?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that would be a regular thing, Member Carlson, um, that, you know, the, the students, if they're tested at Gustavus, um, that the school is very careful about using eight hundred College Avenue, West College Avenue as the address. So then they trace back very easily to Gustavus. But other times, students live off campus, and they may use an address in St. Peter, or, um, they may use their home address, so that those don't come back directly to us, because the way we get, we get notified by the state of the cases. Usually, we've got such a good relationship with case investigation and contact tracing with Gustavus. They have been amazing to work with, um, that we already know about the cases before they show up in our queue. But what we are finding is that some of those cases are just not showing up in our queue at all. One is because they're using rapid testing, but two is because of the addresses. The kids, I, and I call them kids, I said, I'm sorry, I, I have, uh, I have two college kids this, this year, so they're going to be kids to me for a while. But, um, the, the college students, um, they use their home addresses, and so that just goes back to their other county, and unless that their home county, and unless that county picks up that they're Gustavus students, it doesn't kick back and show up in the Niklet County numbers. So our numbers would not adequately reflect all the Gustavus cases.
So what, what percentage do you think are Gustavus cases of that eighty-two that were listed for November first through the seventh?
November first through the seventh. So this is in the, the graph with, with the ages?
Right there. You got it, Gronseth. Mr. Gronseth, sorry.
Okay, um, if I had to guess, that was a, a fairly busy week, um, maybe twenty?
Twenty percent?
No, maybe, maybe twenty, fifteen, twenty. Um, yeah, so, you know, maybe twenty percent.
Oh, fifteen or twenty of, of the Gustavus ones are in the eighty-two? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So you're saying sixty are from our community pretty, from within our area?
Yeah.
Well, there's probably another twenty that are probably from Benedictine. Just throwing that out there, because that was also in that same, because I know they have some out there, too. Does the state hospital have any? Is that a big number that we aren't considering, or does anybody know? Because those people certainly are not in our community.
Well, their staff are.
The state hospital is definitely experiencing cases just like everywhere else. Um, that, that, again, that's a, a more difficult, they draw on a pretty big employee base. So, um, we don't always find out about those cases. I think there are more, there, um, there are more than we realize there, but they are doing a very good job there. Um, I could find a number, um, I want to say, oh, well, I can't even say for sure. They, I had, I'd had a number a while back, but it was a surprisingly small number there. But they, they draw on employees from Brown County even farther away than that, so.
Well, I know this, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Gronseth, go ahead.
All right. I know this graph, um, that Mr. Chambers had created for us, and was an attempt to show without Gustavus and without, um, the congregate living, so that included the, the prison and, and Benedictine. But their, their sites, their websites where he got this information stopped on the thirtieth. So you kind of have to project that, um, by a week to see where they would be going. We know that all of them have gone up from this, from this point, but that kind of shows you um, what it looks like without them. The yellow line with, would be without Gustavus and the, um, the community long-term care facilities or the prison. So that difference between the red line and the yellow line would be, represent the cases in, in those facilities.
I, I guess my point is, if you, i- if we take Gustavus out of the picture, which would happen starting, uh, the twenty-first and twenty-second is when they're told to move home. And then, uh, the congregate living out of there, our number would be, uh, lower and more, a more reasonable number. Um, which, I, to go, to have distance learning planned until January fourth seems like a long time. I'd like to see, it'd be nice to see what happens. I mean, Halloween was a big Gustavus outbreak, you know, and I, I, I don't, I, I don't know how much it reflected the entire community. And so I just, I, I am a little hesitant. I'm, as long as they're a part of our community now, eh, uh, Gustavus, eh, I think they're doing an amazing job. They're testing everybody. I have a kid, an athlete that has a headache, and they'll give them a test, and they're, and then they're part of the quarantine number, by the way. They're quarantined, so, um, but once that community leaves our, our, uh, our school district, I think that that's a time where we could, we should, uh, give some consideration to going back to hybrid. You know, it's the other, the other element of that is, I, I think, uh, frankly, I, I'm disappointed in the state that they're not demanding the school districts around us that are at higher numbers to change their learning model, you know? I- if, if that number is such a hard number, why are these schools continuing to operate in models that don't match up with their numbers?
I think that this has become a very political uh, decision, and I think that's unfortunate, because I think that the science and the numbers behind this are telling us what to do. The politics of it is making it hard, and I, I agree that we can parse these numbers and we can take cases out. I, I just feel like these numbers are overwhelming. I don't think that we can game this system. I think the numbers are high because there's a lot of cases in our community. Um, you know, we could take some cases out, but we can also add some cases in, because if I'm a parent and I have a kid who tested positive, and I have another kid with the exact same symptoms, but they're not serious, I'm not going out and getting them tested. I just assume that they both have COVID. There's nothing that I can prescribe to them to make them better, so we just ride it out. So what are the actual n- numbers? They're not lower, they're likely higher. And then I think if we add in, which I don't want it to get lost in this, quarantine cases are not in these numbers, because they're not COVID-positive numbers. But they take those students out of our educational environment, our in-person educational environment. They disrupt the lives of those students of those families. The teachers are taken out of our in-person learning environment to the point where we struggle to operate our buildings. We've got almost a hundred, uh, staff and students in quarantine right now. I don't expect that number to go down, and it really, to me, doesn't matter if there are ten Gustavus students in that number or twenty-seven Gustavus students in that number. If we've got forty teachers, or twenty teachers, or thirty teachers quarantined, we're not going to be able to provide in-person, uh, learning, no matter what the community numbers are.
Member Carlson, if I may, um, I, I receive a weekly Gustavus, um, communication with the dashboard. Um, I have a son at Gustavus this fall, and, um, I am looking at the numbers from, uh, November second in comparison to November ninth. That was the one issued today. So the total number of positive cases since August fifteenth, um, um, November second was listed as seventy-two. And this week, yes, um, as of yesterday, was a hundred and twenty-seven. Now, keep in mind, those numbers will not be reflected in these numbers, because there's a little bit more of a lag. That's the, the Gustavus number is very up to date. So the number of positive students as of November second was twenty-eight, and as of November ninth is sixty-five. So we're, we are seeing a significant bump. Again, not all of those will be reflected in our Niklet County numbers, but they are not in our numbers yet.
Right. Jody, I have a daughter at Gustavus, and I work there, so I get to see that COVID number every, what is it, Tuesday and Friday?
I think so, yeah.
And, uh, the number that, uh, Mr. Gronseth was using of eighty-two, that, that was not your data. That was, came from that Wolfson guy, correct?
No, that came, that came from, um, Brianna Allen at the county, when I asked her to only do the zip codes that the school district serves.
Right, okay. But it said it was updated to November seventh. If you look at that graph. So, uh, that's why I was like, okay, we're, apples to apples is what Gustavus is on. You can pick the fifth, which is sixty-one, or you can pick the ninth, which is sixty-five, compared to that eighty-two. And that's why I asked what, what, what number you would put, uh, count for of that eighty-two to be Gustavus students. That was my question.
Okay, so I have another graphic, which is all of Niklet County, which would show for that same week, November first to the seventh, is a hundred and forty-six total cases. Because the one we're looking at is just St. Peter.
And this is new cases that we, there wouldn't, ongoing cases.
Again, I, I, maybe I would, I would allow a couple more cases to Gustavus. Maybe I'd go up to twenty. But I, again, I would have to say that not all the cases are coming through in a timely manner and have gone through our system yet.
Can I ask?
Yep.
Go ahead, Superintendent Gronseth.
I, I was just going to add that, you know, we, um, we talked a little bit about when the Gustavus students leave, but we also have another, another consideration of all of our students who are coming back, who are away at college. And they're coming back to be on break. They're not going to be on campus. They're going to be all over the community and visiting their friends, and, um, that, that's another consideration. There's, there's a kind of a yin and a yang to students leaving their colleges.
What other information do board members need to, um, go ahead and, and hopefully call the question and, and vote on moving to, to distance learning?
Uh, this one's for you, Chair Leonard. Uh, how often will we, we review this? Um, uh, again, the date, January fourth, seems a long way away, and, uh, a lot could change in the meantime. Uh, you know, I, I'm all for a reset. I just think January fourth is way too long.
It, it does seem like a long time, but, uh, you know, Christmas, uh, ornaments went out the day before Halloween, and it's the, the tenth of November, and I think with the, the week or half a week holiday of Thanksgiving that, uh, like Vicky said earlier, um, you know, will come pretty soon. And I think one of the things that we talked about in August, one of the things that we've been talking about these past few weeks is seeing a trend. And I think it takes a few weeks to see a trend, and I think, um, we'll know a trend when we see it. We know that Superintendent Gronseth and Jody are talking all the time. Um, we know that our administrators are looking at this, uh, daily. So I think we can talk again next week when we have a meeting. Uh, we can continue to monitor the numbers. For me, going ahead and saying January fourth doesn't preclude us from coming back early if there's some sort of miracle. Um, it also gives families stability. Um, it also would mirror what other school districts in the area are deciding to do. Um, have either decided or are talking about making those decisions. January fourth feels like a fairly universal date in our, in our area that schools are, are targeting. Again, let's, let's give a little bit of time to see what those Thanksgiving numbers are. Let's give us a little bit of time to see, not much time, but a little bit of time to see what those Christmas numbers are. Um, I don't think that there's any reason that we can't continue to monitor the numbers.
Yeah, definitely. I will be continuing to track these. All of our principals, uh, certainly Rachel Fitch has been spending an inordinate amount of time tracking these numbers, and we'll continue to do so. We'll continue to report that to the community on a weekly basis, and I will be sharing it with you as I, I have been on a weekly basis as well. And boy, if, if those numbers were to drop, and, I mean, really drop, like a cliff drop-off, I would be so excited to bring our kids back as soon as we possibly could. Um, but everything that we're hearing and, and from the state and from the county says that they, they don't expect these numbers to drop. So St. Peter community, I challenge you to make it drop, make it happen, and and let us bring all our kids back faster than anybody expected.
Um, this is Tracy. So I would, you know, we can, as people look at data, you can always like make charts and make data, and you can always can kind of spin things that we're spinning, but you can, you can, you can find anything in the data that you want, right? Like, I could look at this data, and I could find the information I wanted, and and other people could. So with that being said, what are we looking for in the data to bring our kids back? What do we need to see? Do we need to see it be that ten thousand case to be below a certain number? How are we going to take into account, like we talked about with the, um, community tests, and that's going to happen? We know the numbers will go up because we're testing more people. Are we going to be able to, to kind of take that into consideration? Like, what, what are we looking at to get it, to get our kids back? Because like I said, you can always, in the current state, you can always look for the data, whatever you wanted to see. You can spin it however you want, and in your mind, right? I mean, I'm sure there's a two hundred people watching online that'll have an idea of what that data should mean, so maybe we should talk. I mean, what are we looking at? What do we want our numbers to be? And I would like, I would like to see us consider the elementary to maybe come back. I mean, if we can get those kids back, I just think that's really important.
Thanks for the question, Tracy. It's, it is an important question. And at the beginning, I, I talked about that this week, uh, well, really, the last week and this week feel significantly different than any of the times before. And the reason that is, is because we are seeing, um, up, up to last week, we were able to say, we're not seeing any close contacts happening at school. we were able to say, we're not seeing any close contacts happening at school. That's not the case. Every day from about midweek last week to now, we've had close contacts at school. We've had times during the day when teachers are considered close contacts, bus drivers, people on the bus, people in class. We weren't seeing that before and we're seeing it now. And so that, to me, is a big indicator that it's time to consider moving that model. When we get to the point where we aren't seeing those high numbers, we aren't seeing that community spread the way that we are now, that's when I'd consider coming back. Certainly, the county case numbers are one data point and I get that. And that's why we, you know, the graphs aren't to try to spin things or try to make it look a certain way. It's just learning more and more about the situation, so.
I'm gonna take the words "spin" off the record. That's not the word I intended to use, it's too late at night. I just meant that data can be confusing sometimes. We're not spinning, nobody is spinning here, other than my brain, so.
No, I understood what you meant, but really, it's just that we are starting to see more spread at school or more close contacts at school with the possibility of it becoming a spread. You know, nobody wants kids out of school, but I also don't want to take the risk of having those positive cases. You know, I am starting to see school districts who have GoFundMe pages for students who are in critical care units. And I don't want that to be us. I don't want to wait so long that we're reacting to a bad situation.
Chair Leonard, if I could, I think the one thing that's really scary about being one-seventh of the board is a point that Dr. Soderland made is that we're talking about a health decision. And except for Dr. Soderland, I guess, none of us are really health experts. And it's also an education decision, also a mental health decision as well. And I just think that I wouldn't feel like we're doing our due diligence. I don't think we started meeting because of a trend, I think we met because of a spike. And if the spike drops, I think it's our jobs to revisit this, I think, weekly. And it may be, the next one might be higher and it's a ten-minute conversation. And, you know, let's visit it next week, you know? But it's just something I think that as a school board, we need to monitor closely. Teacher time matters. And I'm talking more about the elementary. And, you know, they don't have passing time like there is in a high school. I understand, no offense to parents with high school kids, but you're in a different situation, you're passing each other all the time. Most of our students stay in the classroom. There's a little bit of passing time at elementary, but everybody kind of gets their reading and their math mostly from their homeroom teacher. So I just, I would like, if we get four or five days before Christmas where it's in-person, I think even in a hybrid format, I think that there's great value in that. I think we're going to be better at distance learning, but it's just not the same. And how we're doing it except at the middle school, and I don't want anybody to change anything, but it seems like it would be an easy transition to, because we are maintaining basically the hybrid style except at the middle school, where there's an A-day, A-grouping and a B-grouping. So I guess for me, if the vote is to January 4th, I just, I can't agree to that. But I'm for distance learning to at least Thanksgiving and willing to extend it if another meeting, at another meeting when we see the numbers two weeks out or whatever, next week, so.
John, I totally understand where you're coming from. I do think that with the lag of numbers and, you know, the fact that we've talked a lot about two-week-old numbers and current numbers and the fact that we know what everything is in between, I would just look at a calendar. I mean, we are so close to Thanksgiving. We're talking about, we're talking about three in-person days before Thanksgiving for A or B. It's, and I totally understand that if we're given the opportunity, we want to come back and we can come back. I think we've all been clear that we will come back. I appreciate everyone's time, we signed up for this. We are expected to meet and make these decisions. I don't want to meet, I don't want the school board to meet for two and a half hours every week to go over the same information. So I think we do need to be comfortable about if we are going to vote to go to distance, that we are comfortable with where the numbers would need to be for us to come back. And we should have an idea maybe of what that is. But again, I'm basing my decision on what our county public health expert is telling us tonight to go to distance, what our superintendent is telling us tonight, what our administrators are telling us tonight. Not everyone in the public is telling us to go to distance, I will acknowledge that, a lot are. It's, I'm gonna trust those experts to continue to monitor it because Jody has to, that's her job. I work in museums, I got other stuff. You've got athletes to coach, John. You know, the experts that are looking at this and living this 24 hours a day are going to be the ones that are going to, I think, have the best perspective about when it's safe to do something or not safe to do something.
Then one other thing, I think, I just want to make sure it's very clear that this has nothing to do with politics from my perspective. I'm trying to balance education, mental health and the pandemic. This is not political and I actually kind of think it's kind of rough on other school boards to say that their situation is strictly political and that's why they're deciding what they are. I'm just trying to make sure that our kids, especially the kids that need to learn, that need, that need need to be educated, you know, they always say, you know, if a third-grade kid doesn't get their grade reading level, they're never going to catch up. That scares the dickens out of me. I don't know what other I'm making up curse words. But anyways, I just, I think we can be more reactive to the numbers if we don't put a date out there so far. And I would take three days with teachers. I am all for until Thanksgiving for sure. And, but Jan, I just want, I won't state it anymore because I think I've been clear, I'm not in favor of until January 4th.
So just to clarify, I don't mean to push hard on people, but I think this is a time where we are required to make a big decision. Our public health expert and our school district is, and area school districts are recommending until January 4th, so.
Can I just, is that, we talked at one time about starting it on the 23rd, but I see the recommendation tonight is on the 16th. So is that what we're talking, to move it up to the 16th?
Yeah, that is a recommendation at this time. We initially were talking about the 23rd, that is when we were, the projected numbers for, the numbers that are right now were projected to be 27 and those came back in the high 30s. And so we're going up faster than we expected. And with the experience that we've had in the schools this week, I think our principals could speak to that too. The texting that we do in the evening, in the early morning about, okay, I'm missing this many, I'll be subbing today, I won't be in our meeting. That's the reality of what's happening is we're going into classrooms and covering when we have to. I'm waiting for my invitation to the elementaries because I was an elementary teacher. I'm sure that's not far down the road either, I'd be happy to do it, by the way. And I don't know if our principals have anything to add to that. I did have one other thing I wanted to mention, that any of the guidance that we've had from the county or the state, this was, we've, we talked this back in September, that if anyone had to transition to distance learning, that they would do that for, at at that time, they were saying at least three weeks of downward trending data to make sure that it was out of the system. I know there's been a lot of leeway given with those decisions. I guarantee you, we will be tracking this information and we would, I mean, given the right situation, we would certainly make the recommendation to come back early. If we got to the point, though, that we were, you know, that the numbers came down, but we had three days before winter break, I don't think that we would make that transition simply because it would be a difficult transition for three days. So with that small time in between the breaks, I feel like January 4th is a reasonable date to be shooting for. Certainly, we'd have to meet before that date to make sure that that data worked and to make a transition.
Yeah, I also want to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Vicky.
No, I just said thank you, thank you.
You had more before that you wanted.
No, that's okay.
I just want to be aware and empathetic to parents who have to make decisions too. And as contrary as it might seem, I think it's going to be easier for parents to make a decision based on a hard date of January 4th with the idea that if something changes, we can come back rather than we're giving you a week and then we'll see, we're giving you another week and then we'll see. I think, I feel like I owe it to parents to make a decision that gives them some clarity.
December 7th. I mean, I'd rather not guess what the numbers are going to be, but actually see numbers and make decisions off of that. And I think if I knew it was December 7th and it might be extended, I don't know which way it would be easier. If it's January 4th, we say, oh, guess what, we're coming back next week, you know? Or vice versa, I think either way is going to be tricky, so.
I really would prefer that we considered the recommendation of January 4th.
I agree. It's the most reasonable. Of course, we're going to be watching these numbers daily. We've all been doing it every day for a while now. If something ever happened and we needed to take action, we're good. Our interest is to get our kids back into school. But we're not going to do that if it's not safe. And one way that we're going to know about where we stand is watching that number, also looking at availability of our staff and trends. That tells a big story and that takes a little time to bear out. I'm very comfortable with the January 4th. Stake in the sand is a formal review, knowing that we're going to be reviewing it constantly until that time.
I personally could support the distance learning, but I don't like the January 4th. But here's my analogy, is kind of like whatever decision we make tonight, it's kind of like for those that watch like the NFL, the call that's made on the field is usually the call that stands unless you have indisputable evidence to prove otherwise. So by us saying January 4th, we're kind of putting it out there versus just saying, we're just going to review this and we're going to review it as we go. To me, it just, it sends a message that we are wanting, we all know we want our kids back, but I just think by saying it as just we're going to do it and we're going to keep reviewing it, it's just, it feels to me like a better statement, but that's mine. But I can support distance learning, even though I would like to not, I can. But I just, I don't like the idea of five weeks. And when we talk about like them only missing out on like nine days or whatever, we got to keep in mind, yeah, they're only missing out on nine days, but they've only been in school like 16 days, the whole year, whole darn year. You know what I mean? So we can't discount nine days in a school year like this year because every day is very valuable.
I can appreciate that. I just go back to, I think parents need some stability, I think kids need some stability, I think our teachers and staff need some stability. And not knowing one week what you're going to be doing the next week, when in all likelihood, as our superintendent, as our public health expert has said, we are extremely unlikely to see movement in the data before January 4th that would cause us to make a recommendation to come back. We are open to that possibility, but that is probably not a 50% chance. It's probably not a 20% chance, certainly not a 75% chance. So I don't want to base a decision on something that statistically is unlikely.
And again, I echo what Tracy says. I am, I'm all for distance learning at this point. I think the numbers we have and I think it requires it. But I don't know, I just, to guess what the numbers would be, I mean, is just, I don't know if I'm comfortable with pushing it that far out. And are you, let me ask this, because maybe this will get me on the board. So you're saying if we see the numbers when they come out on Friday, the current numbers, the Wolfson numbers, you know what I'm talking about, is that the guy's name?
He's reporting them, but they're the MDH numbers.
Yes, right? And so when those numbers come out and we're down in the, we're trending down into the 30s, are we going to, are we okay with turning around and, because we're trending the right direction to come back in hybrid? At least at elementary?
If we see numbers coming down, if we have this, if we have staff, I mean, say the numbers go down to 30 and we have double the amount of staff in quarantine that we have right now, that's going to be really difficult to come back. But if we have staff available and if numbers come down, we can always revisit our decision and we can choose to come back earlier. I don't think any of us are saying that we wouldn't do that. What I am saying is I prefer to say January 4th to give everyone some stability and then rely on Bill and Jody and other area superintendents and all of the work that they do for 12 hours a day to be the ones to say, hey, hey, it's actually, it's looking, it's looking, we might wait to look at this, we should have a meeting to decide what we want to do, but it looks good, rather than me call a meeting so that we can talk about whether this case was in a nursing home or an elementary kid every week without having a full understanding if our superintendent and our county public health and our Minnesota Department of Health are advising that we come back or not. And I think that uncertainty is harder on kids, it's harder on parents, it's harder on district staff, it's harder on us, that doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what's hard on me, but.
Right, I get what you're saying and I agree that you, me, Drew, anybody on the board shouldn't be calling, it shouldn't be calling, but we're seeing the same numbers that they'll be looking at, you know, from MDH. And I think that, I just think it would be prudent to, I just don't know if the, is it, are we gonna, I don't know what I think anymore, just because the January 4th date may end up being the date that it is. And are we just arguing two different sides of the same coin? Meaning that if I want December 7th and I'm willing to extend it further, or you're saying January 4th and you're willing to cut it short and come back early, aren't we just talking about the same thing from a different perspective?
In my opinion, yeah. In my opinion, yes, but the message we would be sending. Parents and district staff and and the community is based on our expert guidance that we have right now. And that's data and that's guidelines and that's Jody and and Bill and our administrative team in in this meeting. We think that we need to go to distance, which it seems like we have some consensus on. And I have heard from both of them that January 4th is the date that we should target. With the idea that if the numbers are different, I just feel like. It seems that there's a high probability. We are guessing. If we had to put money on it, that it will be closer to January 4th than not. I would love to be surprised. But that's kind of our assumption. Superintendent Gronseth.
I I did want to just throw in there with the date as well. If you think about our distance learning and we said that as as we start this distance learning, we want to start bringing in students for interventions. We want to start bringing in students who need that extra support. And that's, that's going to take some some time. It's going to take longer than a week. And so the reason we are looking at that is because we we are thinking that this is going to be at least until. January 4th and to go to go into that mode to to set that up, to have students in, coming in and get that extra support. We need to know that it's going to be for that, for that time period.
I think parental fatigue is absolutely real and. It's it's hard to make last minute changes. I think one of the most polite things we can do for those parents. Is to create a little buffer of time and January 7th feels good. But, you know, if the numbers are good, we will pivot very quickly and get the kids back in school guaranteed. We know that.
So this is what I think, and I happen to have somebody at my house who loves to live on all the words that I say and make timeline. If we're making a decision saying that we are in a situation right now, we need to go to distance. We're going to continue to review the information and make decisions accordingly. Most likely, it's going to be for a few weeks, but we're going to continue. If I were to say, okay, we're going to go to distance learning and I'm going to put a date out there for January 4th or January 7th. But yet I can change my mind. In my mind, the the first of that makes more sense because we're telling people it could happen. Versus putting that date out there and then it's like we're changing our mind.
If if we said we are targeting a return date of January 4th, does that feel better to you?
No, because that means that we're hoping to be by January later. That's how I view that as. You know, we're, we're targeting it at January 4th, but. If I, if I were to hear that or if I were to read that on a paper, I would assume that to mean we're hoping to be by January 4th. But it could be later. I would never think it was going to be earlier because it just doesn't make sense to me. And then I have a question for Jody too. This fall, when the numbers were really low. Were you ever, I mean, was there discussion amongst your office to be telling, you know. Schools that they could go to a restrictive model? Or did we just not get that information or talk about?
I I think, to be honest, we really didn't go there because, you know, the school year was just starting. The the numbers were really low when the school year just started. So. I, I, you know, I don't think we went there necessarily because we didn't know what was going to happen. I would just want to assure you that, you know, from a public health standpoint, we would be of the mindset that students belong in school too. That's what's best for their health and wellbeing. So we don't, we don't recommend pulling them out lightly. If it would help to meet on a regular basis, if it would help to provide. Information to you and maybe a summary every week or two weeks to let you know where things are at. We would be more than happy to do that. But, you know, we are of the mindset that we want students back in school too. There's, you know, there's real mental health concerns with students not being in school. So that's concerning to us. So we we don't do this lightly at all. And also, you know, as a nurse, one of the things we do is when you get a new patient, you start discharge planning the same day. So to John's point, I'm very open to start talking about what's the plan to go back. Nothing would make me happier than to get those students back in school. You know, that would mean so many things are going on in the community and they're they're aligned right. So that's, you know, that's ultimately the goal. Nobody wants them out longer than we have to be. And I I appreciate that this is a really tough decision for you guys. And I I know, I I appreciate that you guys would literally spend hours on it. And I don't mean that in a bad way because this, this is a tough decision and I'm really heartened. By your discussion to know that you really have the best interests of the students in mind, whether that's. You know, we want the families to be able to plan or that's we want the the students to have face, face to face time with their teachers to learn best. And so I I'm sure it's kind of frustrating for you guys to have to discuss for this amount of time, but. I I think it's been a very productive discussion and I'm very heartened to see how much you guys care about the students. So I just want to say that too. So thank you for for looking at this so thoroughly.
I have a question for Jody. Jody, what are we missing or what are other school districts missing? That they are, because Ben cited that everybody was planning to on a November, that was about half the schools on that list. That were planning to go to distance learning, maybe less than half of the document. What are, what are they seeing that we're not or what are we seeing that they're denying? I mean, what, what, I just want to get a few, some feedback on that.
Um, I would say that in in the Niklet County Schools, we are moving to distance learning universally. So Mankato would be our other school. Niklet School is moving to a more restrictive model tomorrow. They're going to hybrid. We are meeting with them to move that to more of a distance learning setting to meet the county numbers. They they've had experiences there where we've had entire classrooms out lately. So. I I'm not sure what what to say. I mean, the the schools that were at the Blue Earth Niklet County meeting yesterday that aren't. Looking to move to a more restrictive model. Honestly, I I'm not quite sure why I don't understand why that is. It's it's mostly, it was mostly the smaller towns. You know, and and I think probably more of a feeling of being in a small town, you kind of know everybody and it's just a little bit safer there. And I I I'm not sure that's the right route to go.
Thank you. That's very insightful. That helps a lot. Also. Chair Leonard mentioned that you, I know I heard, well, I've seen. Mr. Gronseth and the administrative staff recommend January 4th. Did you offer that as a date as a recommendation? Or was that presented to you or where where do you stand on that? I mean, you heard Tracy's point about, you know, what if we do decide to reel it back in a little bit? So, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it might have stemmed out of my original concern was, you know, I I also sit on the command team for the Mankato Area Schools. And and, you know, just as our numbers started to climb every week, I would go and I'd say, our numbers are climbing. We need to start thinking about. How do we move to that model? Because it's not something that can be done quickly. And then I started thinking more about what happens between the holidays because we know that. People are getting squirrely, they're going out and they're, you know, they're doing the Halloween thing, they're going to family gatherings, having weddings. And and so. This is like prime time during, you know, Thanksgiving to New Year's. And so. I may have come up with that and and influenced that, but I I would 100% support that. I think. You know, some of that is going to be Thanksgiving and Christmas break, but. I don't know that people are going to manage to follow social distancing rules over the holidays.
Thank you, Jody. Well, Ben. I don't, I know we don't need consensus because, you know, we're a democracy and it can be a split vote if that's the way it goes, but. Our educators have told us that January 4th is the date and are willing to revisit it if numbers go down. Our health expert has told us January 4th is the date and is open to us revisiting it. If the numbers go down, I would be in support of January 4th.
Thank you, John. Is that a motion?
I don't think I'm making it as a motion. I think someone else should, the way the conversation has gone tonight.
Sure. I I could do that. So I move to approve the recommendation before us. I won't name all of the highlights or all of the details, but I'll just list out the highlights. A transition to distance learning model for all students beginning Monday, November 16th. Friday, November 13th would be a day of preparation and planning for all staff. There would be no distance learning instruction for that day. And per state guidance, co-curricular activities would be discontinued while in distance learning mode.
Excellent. We have that motion, which I'm not going to reread.
Sorry.
No, that's perfect. Is there a second for the motion?
Hager, excuse me, Hager, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We had some initial discussion. Fifty-two. Is there any, any last? Thoughts?
Yeah, I would. Really appreciate having Jody be part of these discussions. I think if we're voting for January 4th. I think we still want to be open that if the numbers change, that we will revisit this. I think during this time, we really need to lean on Jody and have her input in this because it is a public health decision. That being said. I think one of the biggest concerns by setting a number or a date of January 4th. Is that we've been doing this now since March. And we started out, we were going to flatten the curve for two weeks and then so on and so forth. And now we're going back again. I think we need to see, be able to see some light at the end of the tunnel. And right now, it's really hard to see any. So I would feel personally. It would be very beneficial to have Jody part of this discussion. Secondly, I think the issue is can we staff the school? We could all vote, no, we're not going to accept this recommendation. But it does fall down to can we even staff the school if we're if we're quarantining? And. To me, that's more of a, an appropriate question for the school board to be making than making a public health decision. That's why I feel that Jody needs to be part of the input. But if we can't staff the school. Then I, then of course we need to go to distance learning and and that. So. Those two things. Can we staff the school and Superintendent Gronseth is saying, we're having trouble right now staffing the school. And I'm hearing from Jody that this is a public health crisis. We do need to go to distance learning right now. And I, and hopefully all of us can agree, we're going to keep revisiting this. Where if it possibly we can open up beforehand, then I'm going to be all for that. But. That's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you so much, Dr. Soderland. I think that summed it up really well and. You know, in my, in my head, Jody and Bill are talking all the time. So. I just, I appreciate both of you and and Jody from, from all of us. Thank you for all the work that you've put into this and and the county and. You know, I can imagine that when you got into public health, you thought something like this could be possible, but. This is nothing that any of us thought we would be. Working on and and I I really hope by doing this that we are back in person and not just hybrid. My kid's graduating in May. I would really, that's probably not going to be like my daughter's graduation was in. 2018, but I I I want that to be a public thing and. It's up to the community and it's up to to everyone to. To do this and, you know, not to belabor this meeting, but I, looking at other countries as a guide. There have been some countries that that got their caseloads down real fast. And there's no reason that we can't do that. But we're not going to be able to do that if we don't make any concessions or any changes in our lives. So.
This is Tracy. I was just going to say something too. I I just want to point out that it's a, we're making a public health decision. When the state legislature and the governor and they met to establish this whole safe learning plan. I think it's, there was a reason why they put that on the school, make that decision and not public health because they want that back. Between, you know, who, because if they really wanted to be strictly just us, you know what I mean? Like, there was a reason why they put it on the school board level. I just wanted to point that. That the state isn't making that decision and the county, and it's the school board.
Thank you, Tracy.
Last thing I have, just in case we don't go around the table, I would strongly encourage the community to surprise. The the people that are expecting our numbers to continue to go up. Please, please mask. Please, social distance. Let's, let's see if we can't get our kids back. I I want them back as much as anybody else on the board and. But I need the numbers to go down. I mean, I'm, I think that, I think it's, we're making a prudent decision. And I think my whole discussion tonight was depending on our community that they will take care of things better than than. People expect.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I will call the question. This is a roll call vote because we are distanced. Tracy?
Stewie's going to vote. No, sorry, guys.
It's all right. Bill?
I.
Thank you, Vicky.
I. Hager, I.
Drew?
Dixon.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Motion does carry. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate this robust discussion. Jody. Thank you very much for spending your evening with us. There's 220 people on the live stream. There's been. Upwards of 228 tonight. So thank you for sticking with us. Thank you for being involved. Thank you for your emails to the COVID chat. I think we addressed a lot of them in the discussion. We were not able to discuss all of them. We will try and answer those as quickly as possible. If we start now, we might be done by midnight, but. We will try and get answers out within, I'll say, within 24 hours. I'll I'll throw that gauntlet down. So. Thank you all very much. We do not have any other action items. We do have a few upcoming meetings. We have a co-curricular committee meeting tomorrow, November 11th at 8:00 AM in the. St. Peter Middle School Room 124 or virtual. I will be virtual because I have had contact, potentially secondary contact with someone with COVID. And then our regular school board meeting will be November 16th at 6:30. And we have a policy review committee December 8th at 8:00 AM. So those are our upcoming meetings. I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion so you're, you can let your dog out. Really got to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, that, that dog's just going to have to wait. Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn.
Dixon, second.
Excellent. We have a second. Tracy?
Stewie, I.
Bill?
I.
Thank you. Vicky?
Hager, I.
Drew?
Dixon, I.
John?
Carlson, I.
Leonard, I. Motion to adjourn carries. Thank you again, everyone, board members. This is. again, the hardest decision that I've been a part of on the board and I appreciate that we're all coming from different perspectives, that this isn't political, that we all care a whole lot. Um, that we can now move forward and, um, you know, continue to, to monitor the situation and, and, and hope for the best. But we've made a plan that, that I think will work, uh, for the district and for, uh, the community. So, thank you.